More money.
Scored in the world.
Um, I'm Al. That's always.
We're going on New York. What do you think you said anyway? I've got several things I need to bring.
Good afternoon, and we're glad to have each one here today with us for our June 21st, 2021 board meeting. And if you would like to speak to Jim Dedham, please sign up on the sheet with our secretary. And we will ask Mr. Dennis Aldridge if he would let us in our indication.
Lord, we're grateful to you for another day that we have in such a beautiful place and how blessed we are to be a part of this community and all that it involves. Lord, we recognize all the need around us and we pray for those who need to feel your touch. And we are grateful for all that you've already done and what you are doing right now. We pray for wisdom and discernment, Lord, as we're about the business of this county, that everything we do would be honorable to you and useful for the citizens that we serve. Lord, we thank you in Christ's name. Amen.
Let's start standing. We'll ask Mr. Tim Phillips. He'll lead us in our place.
Our flag of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can be seated. All right. 3.2, called to order our formal session. A, proclamations and awards.
And Board and Madam Chairman, we do have an award today. We have a letter of appreciation. So if this wonderful young lady would like to come forward or stand, Ms. Rachel Deal.
Ms. Rachel. The Avery County Board of Commissioners would like to recognize your dedication and years of service on Avery County Planning Board. Your contributions to the Board have been invaluable. You have truly been an asset to this Board and your knowledge of Avery County and its citizens. Again, thank you so much. You truly have a servant's heart, which is demonstrated through the many hours of volunteering that you do. You have been an inspiration and mentor for the next generation of volunteers, and we wish you the best. Sincerely, Martha Hicks, Chair of the Avery County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you so much. It's been my pleasure to be on any and all boards that I have been on in Avery County. There's nothing like the people in Avery County. Thank you so much.
There's nothing like you.
Rachel and I were talking a little bit the other day, and she said, well, all I want to be is a servant. I said, well, honey, I don't know when that's going to run out. But she's been a great servant to the county and the people, and we wanted to recognize her. All right, we'll move right along to 3.2B, our public comments. Do we have anyone that's signed up? Mr. Jim, come on.
Thank you. My name's Jim Swan Cole, and I'm here to address the two sheets of paper that Mr. Barry was kind enough to put in front of you. They interrelate, and they talk about July 23. Save the date for a conversation, and it's the who, what, where, when, why, and how that's going to unveil. Basically, this is going to be in Hayes Auditorium at Lees and Craig College, and Senator Warren Daniel and Representative Dudley Green are going to be there to be able to answer questions that are submitted. There's been a group including Aaron Buchanan, Lee King, Brenda Lyerly, Michelle Tate, and myself, who've been working on this for several months, hand in glove with both Warren and Dudley. So the who, what, where, when, why, and how are on this first handout sheet. The second one is your opportunity as commissioners and folks within the audience, there are several of these, to submit a question to be asked to either one or both of these representatives of the needs of Avery County. So this form has been promised as soon as possible, as soon as we get them, to go to both the Senator and the representative, so they can research your question and hopefully be able to come up with a concrete, concise answer or response for you. We do ask that all questions be in as soon as possible, but no later than July 20th. This will give these two men at least three days to research whatever your topic of conversation is. I'm excited about this. I know that these folks have worked long and hard for Avery County, and at the end of July 23, you all will educate them even more about the needs that this county has that they can represent in Raleigh. Are there any questions or comments anyone would like me to hear?
I would just say that I had the opportunity with the High Country Council of Governments to go down to legislative day a couple of weeks ago and spend some time with both of these representatives, and I will really commend both of them. I think they're very interested in our county and very responsive to everything that we brought to them, and I think this is wonderful. Thank you for setting this up, and I think it's a good opportunity for the citizens to meet some folks that are really doing a great job, I think, for Avery County.
They're quality individuals and have responded to me almost instantaneously when I put something before them. Hope to see you on the 23rd.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Warren will still take my calls or text me back when I text him. Just don't block my number, give this Martha.
3.2, seats, board appointments.
Okay, Board. So today we have in front of us two spots for the Avery County Economic Development Advisory Committee, and these have been advertised. You've had a 30-day last meeting to look them over. These are two appointments that are filling Melinda Pebble and Carmen Lacy's vacant seats. Carmen's was taken by Eric, and Ann's been filling in for Melinda. But you have in front of you for those two seats Eric Berg, Clarence Edward Dean, Terry Milton, and Doug Owen, and Ann Mickelman.
So make sure you sign and bag your ballots, and these will be filed in the court's office for a public inspection, and it will be recorded in the minutes. Did I say that? Well, a lot of that. Was it your recess was just a minute?
Well, recessed for just a few minutes to wait it to be counted. You've got 32.
Well, as you'll see, send your 3.7, of course, while there's a down moving shield there. One huge play Saturday night. I played it. We played it up. I partied. It sounded like my pussy. They're so good. Not hot spice, but not too bitter. Now, what the hell would happen if you sauce it? New recipe for me. How are you, sir?
Great. Great.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. No, thank you. Thank you. Looks good.
This doesn't look like 1997 anymore.
You mean 97? I'm sure it's like 97. I would have given 97. To get something like that.
All right, we have two highs was Clarence Dean and Terry Milton. And I hear a motion that we approve these two people to go on the economic development. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We have one to review, and we'll take it up next month.
Yeah, you have an application to review, and this is for the David Pollard's seat. So we've just been going over and over and over. So this is finished. So David Pollard's seat will be, needs to be filled, and you do have an application for review, and that is Mr. Terry Milton.
I agree, yeah.
So we'll vote on that at our next meeting.
3.4A, our county commissioners, our county managers' report.
Okay, so let's go with 3.
3.3, sorry.
You barely see that right there. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I thought vertigo today. So we're going to 3.3A.
High Country North Carolina proposal.
High Country, all right.
So Michael Intan.
Michael Cooper and.
Jim's going to start off.
Okay.
Our president-elect. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here and speak with you today. My name is Jim Lewis. I am the president-elect of the High Country Association of Realtors. Here with me today are Duncan Martin, our CEO, and Michael Cooper, who is our Government Affairs Director. Our association represents over 700 real estate professionals in the high country, which is Ash, Avery, Allegheny, and Watauga Counties. As you're fully aware, it's been a very busy time in the real estate industry these last few months. In 2020, our members sold more homes than we've ever sold before. 3,200 listings were sold, and it was, I think, over $1.1 billion in 2020. Just an incredible number. The median sale price was $285,000, and it's continued this year. The first quarter of 2021, the median sale price has jumped to $340,000. And we're already up 44% compared to a year ago for the first four months through the end of April. Just to give you a little bit more specific numbers in Avery County, we sold 712 homes here worth $285 million, and that was an increase of 29% over the previous year. Median sale price in 2020 was $255,000. And April of this year, median sale price in Avery County was $350,000. And I think there were five homes that were over $1 million and sold just in April alone. We know why it's happening. There's very low interest rates. Those have continued, and everybody wants to spread out a little bit because of the virus, because of COVID. And I think with everybody being able to remotely work from anywhere they want, they choose beautiful places like Avery County. And I think we'll continue to see an increase in demand of people wanting to be here. So sort of as a segue to that, we're working on a couple of exciting projects, and one of them is that we've received a proposal to do a housing needs assessment for the four county region, because we need to better understand our inventory and affordability, and particularly broadband access, internet access. So we're working to secure, we're also doing a second thing, which is working to secure a grant with the Main Street Development Association for the town of Newland. And I'm going to let our Government Affairs Director, Michael, talk to you more about both of those things. Thank you.
And we'll keep it brief. It's great to be here. And Duncan, our CEO of the High Country Association, we want to make this sort of a regular thing, maybe quarterly, that we can come before y'all and update y'all. And you see what the numbers are, and they keep getting higher. We got to get ahead of that and think about what the long-term effects are, and we want to make sure we keep Avery County an affordable place to live and a place where you can, you know, raise your family and work and be part of the workforce and not be priced out of that. So there are a few things that we're using our resources to try to do. At the beginning of this year, we conducted a poll of the region, over 400 folks in the High Country region. We were looking at quality of life issues and things like that, and sort of confirmed what we already knew, and that people were pretty satisfied with their quality of life here. Housing affordability is a big issue. Broadband access is a big issue, but it's some good data, and I think the county manager's seen that, and I can share that with the commissioners as well. But there's a couple other things we want to do as well. We want to conduct a housing needs assessment for our four county region, for all four counties, to see, you know, what's out there, what can be developed, what the barriers are to development, what we can do to sort of accelerate that, get developers to the table, address things like construction costs and things like that, and sort of see what we can do to generate new inventory for our members, but also, you know, more importantly, for the folks who live and work here. I think that's the most important thing. And then the second thing we're working on, and I'll be speaking next week to the Avery Economic Development folks, we want to try to use a grant from the National Association of Realtors to fund a Main Street Development Assessment for the town of Newland. And, you know, as we saw with these housing numbers, folks keep coming. They want to be here, and I think that this is an opportunity for this community in Newland to really grow and to thrive and to really, you know, support small businesses and, you know, really take advantage of this market. So we want to use our resource to help the folks here study those issues and support the downtown. So that's something we'll be talking about with them. But with the housing needs assessment, we have been speaking to folks in all four counties. I think that we've got good commitment from Watauga County government, from Ash County government, from the Blue Ridge Economic Development Center in Allegheny County. And we can come up with the funding for half of this study from our Realtor side, and we want to make sure that we have some kind of buy-in from the folks in Avery County as well, so that we can pursue this on behalf of our members. I know that the same organization that we're looking to do this with, the Bowen National Research, has already begun doing a project funded, I think, by the Dogwood Foundation out of Asheville, to do this for the 18 westernmost counties in North Carolina, which would include Avery. Avery would be a part of that. But we want to make sure that Avery is, gets specific, in-depth work out of that. So we want to make sure you're one of four and not just one of 18. And there's a couple things that we want to add in. One of those is opportunities for development. I don't think that'll be in the Dogwood study. It would look at plots of land, pieces of property where we can try to develop new housing. So we want to be able to bring that added attention to this community and making sure that study's being performed here and that y'all get something out of it, that you're satisfied with. So that's where we're at. If you have any questions, let me know. And I think with your help, we'd be able to get this thing done and get it started within the next couple of months.
Well, I was reading these materials that are in a packet here. So where, what is coming down to us? What is our decision matrix at this point?
It's entirely up to this commission. In our negotiations with the other counties, what everybody was saying was, we want to make sure that sort of every county has a seat at the table and has some skin in the game for this. Now, understanding that every county has less population than some of these other counties, and the fact that y'all have already gotten some of this work started through this Dogwood Foundation fund, our target in mind is if we can get $500 from Avery County, I think that's going to be enough for us to be able to satisfy our obligations and get this through. That line item that we want to do of barriers to, of opportunities for development, if we can get an additional 500 from Avery County, I think that we'll be able to satisfy that for Avery County and make sure we get that in there. So our request is at least 500. If $1,000 can be contributed from Avery County, then I think that we're going to get everything that we need. So that's our, that's our target amount, and, you know, we would love some participation. But more importantly, we want to make sure that Avery County has a seat at the table during this work, and more importantly, when the work is completed, because that's when the real work begins, you know, making sure that we're actually using that data and that information, you know, to have the necessary conversations that we need.
And Bowlin would be the vehicle that this would be operated through, correct?
Yes, sir. And they have, they did one for Wilkes County that was completed in 2020 that was very well received. I spoke to, I think, the county manager and also a town manager from Wilkesboro, and he said he thought it was the best money that the Wilkes EDC had spent in some time. So I think they were satisfied with that work.
I'll be meeting with them in the High Country Council later on tonight, so we can have that conversation again.
Wonderful. Well, you know, we encourage y'all to be a participant in this, but we want to make sure that y'all get your money's worth and that y'all are a participant and have a seat at the table throughout the study and the work that will come after it, because that's the most important thing. Yeah.
Anyone else have any comment?
Thank y'all. Thank you for your leadership, and we want to make this sort of a semi-regular occurrence to come up here and keep y'all updated on the, on the real estate market. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Now we'll go to 3.4, our county manager's report, and he told me today he didn't have a thing to say, and I said, I can't believe it.
I'll just point out that in your informational items, there is, we already know our EMS is second to none. You will see a review that has to be done every five years, and they pass that with flying colors. So congratulations.
Pretty sure the first time I ever remember a county manager update.
Get used to it.
I suspect I'm there. Is that working for Tom?
Yes. He speaks into me.
I'm going to read this letter that was in there. I thought it was very good to know that the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services wrote a letter to Mr. Edmison. "We have completed our review of the EMS system proposal for Avery County. I am happy to inform that all documents for EMS system approved is in place and that Avery County is hereby approved as a North Carolina EMS system. We appreciate the effort of all the people in Avery County who have developed the EMS system applications. It's representing a great deal of work, and you are all to be congratulated on the job well done. Thank you for your continued support, and feel free to call upon us if we can assist you in any way." And this was a letter from Tom Mitchell, the chief, Office of Emergency Medical Service. That's highly speaking of our EMS. All right, we'll move right along to 3.4, our Fannin's Office Report, Caleb Hoag.
How many budget amendments did you have this week, man?
A few. That time of the year.
I wasn't trying to dominate the conversation. It sure looked that way, though.
So ice meeting of the year.
As you have already seen, there's some, a little bit of tidying up the end-of-year budget amendments in the fiscal year. And so we'll get started. We have to stop for air a couple of times. Item number one, the Commissioners Department needs to be amended to account for higher refunds than originally budgeted. Request the Board to approve the following budget amendment: to debit tax refunds, general fund line item 415500 in the amount of $26,000, and to credit tax collections, general fund line item 3100 in the amount of $26,000.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
To approve. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Board. The EMS department requests a budget amendment for increased cost of personnel. This is due to medics being quarantined and a combination of full-time and part-time employees who have filled the vacant shifts. I request the Board to adopt the following budget amendment: to debit salaries part-time, general fund line item 5300.0210 in the amount of $31,320. To debit salaries EMT, general fund line item 5300.0220 in the amount of $105,950. To debit FICA, general fund line item 5300.0500 in the amount of $8,400. To debit retirement, general fund line item 5300.0600 in the amount of $1,750. And to credit fund balance appropriated, general fund line item 3990 in the amount of $147,420.
I hear that we approved the budget amendment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Well, I, in matter of, just got to make me point out that this is, as a result of the, all the COVID items and people being out, and this, for the cover all those shifts, and it was not poor planning, it was just the fact of having to cover, provide for the care of the county in the midst of all that was going on.
And primarily emergency services, we can't just leave a position vacant if somebody's out due to quarantine. We have to fill that with another body, and sometimes that requires overtime, but that individual's already worked his shifts, and he needs to come in and fill that shift. And so that's the primary reason. And we're hoping to get some reimbursement through other means, such as FEMA, that we've been working on. Those funds just hadn't all come in yet. So just to get us in through this year, we need this amendment.
That's all right. We need to let the people know that why this was a big cost to the county, but everybody knows that the pandemic is what has caused all this.
And every year with EMS, we run into this shortfall, and we're going to start working on that.
We're going to work on that.
Because it has to be covered 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So we'll start working on that. Gently, you seen that commercial on TV that says gently?
All right. Thank you, Board. Item number three, due to increased revenues on excise stamps, the register of deeds requires an increase in the excise tax line item. And I'll preface before I propose this. Basically, we have, due to the growing economy and growing housing market that we've already heard from, we are over budgeted on the, we've received more revenues, we've also received more expenses. And so it's money in, money out, so to speak, on that. And just for informational, if you'd like to know, we budgeted for 300, $450,000 for excise stamps. This is revenue, and we've received over $1.2 million. So, but the budget amendment that we're going to be asking for today is to debit state excise tax, general fund line item. excise tax, general fund line item 4800.5700, an amount of $350,000, and to credit state excise stamps, general fund line item 3571, an amount of $350,000.
Do I hear a motion to adopt this budget amendment?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. They were all over that one, weren't they? Everybody wanted that one.
And I'll make note also, half of the revenue that we bring in on that, half of it is an expense as well, and that's why we make that budget. Item number four, Avery County will collect fire taxes in excess of budgeted figures, and a budget amendment is required in order to pass through those additional tax collections. Request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit fire commission. This is the Fund 20, line item 6600.4012, an amount of $215,000, and to credit tax collections, fire Fund 20, line item 3100, an amount of $215,000.
I hear a motion to adopt the following budget amendment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, board. Item number five, the county of Avery has incurred various expenses related to pandemic response. The county has applied for reimbursement but has yet, not yet received all the funds requested. This is funds that we have requested through FEMA to be reimbursed for, and we're still waiting and anticipating funds to come in, but they, to our knowledge, will not hit for the end of this year. So, we need to appropriate for this. And there is FEMA, general fund line item 5250.3304, an amount of $27,104.70, and to credit available for appropriations, general fund line item 7,000.6000, an amount of $27,104.70.
I hear a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number, item number six.
I'm starting to do that, and I decided not to.
The Parks and Recreation Department budget needs to be amended due to wages for seasonal employees and field maintenance included in the seasonal employees line items, football referees, basketball referees, and seasonal pool workers. And I'll preface both those line items by saying, the field maintenance, I've worked with Ashley to find out while we were over in field maintenance, and that is due to a employee being temporarily paid out of the wrong line item. So, it's not funds that we weren't budgeted for, they were just temporarily paid out of the wrong line item. So, we were actually finding that, but it was shown a negative because they were paid out of field maintenance when they should have been paid out of a different line item, if that makes sense. And then seasonal workers, the pool, back when we were operating during the pandemic, last year, we had to have extra personnel there for cleaning, disinfecting, checking temperatures, and so that's put us over in that. And so, that would be a debit to salary field maintenance, general fund line item 6200.0220, an amount of $2,600. Wages seasonal workers, general fund line item 6200.2030, an amount of $8,800. FICA, general fund line item 6200.0500, an amount of $798, and credit fund balance appropriated, general fund line item 3990, an amount of $9,598.
Do I hear a motion to approve the budget amendment?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number seven, the Department of Public Grounds has incurred additional expenses due to various repairs and maintenance, increased costs of supply, cleaning supplies, and the increase in utilities expenses. Pandemic has caused all our supplies, especially clean supplies to increase. And as far as the telephone utilities, we're working to, to try to drive down our costs on our telephone utilities, and I'm going to be meeting with our rep, and there's a few different reasons why we went over. One, we had budgeted in other departments for utilities, and over the years, we have moved those utilities to be paid out of public buildings and grounds and not their individual budgets, and the budget was never changed to reflect that. But we are working on that moving forward. And this will be amendment to debit utilities telephone, general fund line item 5,000.1310, an amount of $42,000. Debit repairs and maintenance, general fund line item 5,000.1510, an amount of $15,300. Debit cleaning supplies, general fund line item 5,000.3300, in the amount of $22,100, and credit available for appropriations, general fund line item 7,000.6000, an amount of $56,567.30, and to credit fund balance appropriated, general fund line item 3990, an amount of $22,832.70.
All right. Do I hear a motion that we adopt the budget amendment?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, board. Item number eight, the solid waste department has seen an increase in salary expenses due to the pandemic and the closure of the Avery County landfill. Request the board approve the following budget amendment to debit salary scale operator, general fund line item 5800.0200, an amount of $9,677. Debit salary truck driver, general fund line item 5800.0210, an amount of $19,875. Debit FICA, general fund line item 5800.0500, an amount of $997, and to credit fund balance appropriated, general fund line item 10, 3990, an amount of $30,549.
All right, we have a question. Go ahead.
Did we not, how are these, why are we paying extra salaries? Were they not, did we hire extra people?
An extra truck driver, I believe during the pandemic, to help cover a position that was under workman's comp, was hired, and we were hoping to get some of that covered under FEMA, and has been applied for FEMA. We've not yet received that money. And the...
And then everybody staying here during the pandemic and not going home increased our tenage, and we...
Yeah, but it didn't increase the hours they worked.
No, but it increased the fees that we paid. The tenage fee?
We're talking about separate, separate amendments, separate budget amendments.
And this is, these are salaries.
Correct.
These two are only salaries, and...
We did have a couple of employees quarantined, and then we also had employees on workers' comp. And we will try to get reimbursement for the quarantine through FEMA, but that's been kicked back.
I just, I couldn't understand.
Number one.
I couldn't understand why, if we were understaffed and had to hire, or, you know, their regular salaries or what.
I'm good with...
FEMA being so slow has really caused a lot of these budget amendments. We have to clean this up to get the books correct for June 30th. When that money comes in, we're going to come back to you and say, Lord, hope, knock on wood. When that money comes in, we're going to come back and say, now, we want to fit this back in the fund balance because we had to take it out of the fund balance.
Did we? No, I'm wrong, but it's a different department. I was thinking we added a position and didn't fill it, but it's a different department.
Yep.
The new budget.
New budget, we did. So, starting July, we do have another question.
That's not what I was thinking of. Sorry, I'm getting over my brain, don't work like it once did.
All right, do I have a motion that we approve the budget amendment?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, board. Item number nine, the solid waste department has seen an increase in contract hauling due to the pandemic and the closure of the Avery County landfill. Request the board approve the following budget amendment to debit contract hauling trash, general fund line item 5800.7420, an amount of $102,078.15, and to credit solid waste fees, general fund line item 3215, an amount of $102,078.15.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the budget amendment?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I believe we all got much more trash.
Every house that's sold has been cleaned out.
Yeah.
And we had to help.
And it's filled up.
I just don't know that people realize that solid waste is one of our biggest expenses in the county, it's in our top three most expensive department, and I don't know that people generally realize that.
Looks like if it keeps climbing, it's going to be a...
I've told several people that's one of the biggest expenses we have.
Yeah.
It is amazing, man.
And they look at you like you're crazy.
Yeah.
Well, when you can fill up too, you can clean them out and have them empty on a Saturday Sunday, and then Monday, it's a red alert, you've got, they're all full again in one day.
And if a holiday comes up, it doubles the next time that you're at the dump site. Does ma'am?
Item... Item number 10, the non-departmental unit needs a budget amendment for increased cost for state secured detention. Request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit state secured detention, general fund line item 7,000.6135, an amount of $20,000, and to credit fund balance appropriation, general fund line item 3990, an amount of $20,000.
All right. Do I hear a motion to adopt the budget amendment?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, board.
You expect questions?
I think they've already been asked.
Yeah, I'm already getting tongue-tied, so maybe we can, I will request the board at the end of this statement to adopt the following line item transfers. I've talked to Cindy, and these will be in the minutes to the various...
Yeah, you're not going to read all of those, are you?
I will if you want me to.
I don't see that.
I will say this, this year, the county has a 27th payroll that will hit our general ledger. The 2021 budget only included salaries, FICA, and retirement for 26 payrolls. In order to keep our books balanced, the following budget amendment will need to be made. This is debiting various departments, salaries, retirement, FICA line items, and crediting fund balance appropriation.
Do I hear a motion that we approve?
Move to adopt.
All right.
And this is going to happen around every 10 years.
This, if you're wondering what this is, you're with the journal, I guess, aren't you? If you're wondering what this is, occasionally, there's an extra Tuesday, our payday's on Tuesday, and every so many years, there's 20, 53, I guess, Tuesdays instead of 52 in a year, and it, sometimes it just happens to fall to pay week.
All the cause of bleep here.
Yeah. Happens every seven, eight, 10 years, something.
Yeah.
Been a while since the last time.
All right.
Not something you'd ever think about in your mind.
Do I hear that we adopt this amendment?
So moved.
Ever done a... Yeah, we did. All right.
All right, thank you, board. If I can't entertain any questions, that's all I have.
What else you been doing?
Um, you know.
Just let us know when the money comes in, and maybe we can... The lottery's a lot better.
I certainly will.
All right.
And I hate to brag on Caleb all the time, but honestly, I mean, he is prepared for the service. So, thank you for this, because this prepares our books for June 30th for the end of the fiscal year. And a budget is our best estimate, it's our best guess, and this is what happens. So, we'll be back.
We do thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it, Caleb.
Thank you all.
All right. We'll move right along to 3.4. Our county attorney's report, Michelle Porter.
The only thing I bring to the board's attention is in your consent agenda items, there is the contract with Motive Care, and that is the other contract, the Medicaid expansion. We had one that the board considered at the last meeting, and this is the other contract. So, I don't know if the board members have any questions on that, such as in the consent items for the board's consideration.
Barbara could tell us all about that Medicaid, can't you, Barbara?
More than you want to know.
I will say that whenever we met with Senator Daniels and representatives that we talked to, Deanna Ballard, all the ones that we were down in Raleigh talking to, they were universally not happy with the HHS and the way this Medicaid expansion just sort of showed up all of a sudden again after a year's absence, and they're scrambling to try to get things like this in place quickly. Everybody, everybody felt kind of blindsided by it, and so, we're no, no different than any other county.
Go ahead and mark this down now, and years after I'm gone, the county's going to end up getting a bill for this. You just go ahead and mark that down now.
I've stated before, this is phase one. Here comes an unfunded mandate.
All right. We don't have any more comments, we'll move along to 3.5. Our staff reports and requests, do we have any, Mr. Manager?
We do not, now, turn to the board.
3.6, our closed session, do we have something there, Michelle?
We do. And I ask the board to consider going into closed session to, for consultation with county attorney and real property acquisition.
And that's GS 143-318.11A5. All right, we got that. All right, we will invite our secretary, our manager, and our attorney, and we will, do I hear a motion that would go in?
And can we also invite the finance officer?
Yeah. Mr. Caleb, you're not in with us.
Maybe we need a further question for reading, please.
All right. We have the motion on the floor and a second, so let's, all that's in favor going into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right.
All right, three point seven, approval of the minutes.
I didn't have him.
I didn't think they were... All right. Three point eight, our agenda consent items. We've had a chance to read those over. Does anyone have any questions on the consent items? If not, we adopt them by consent. And we have our informational items, three point nine. And then, we have our upcoming meetings. We changed one of our first Monday meetings to July the twelfth.
This will be considered a special meeting. And then, we have canceled our July the nineteenth.
I'll take them up.
All right, 3.7. Approval of the minutes, well...
I didn't have him.
I didn't think they...
Nope.
All right. 3.8, our agenda consent items, we've had a chance to read those over. Does anyone have any questions on the consent items?
No.
If not, we adopt them by cesse. And we have our informational items, 3.9. And then, we have our upcoming meetings. We changed one of our first Monday meetings to July the 12th.
This will be considered a special meeting. And then, we have canceled our July the 19th regular meeting. We've canceled the July the 5th meeting because of the holiday and canceled the July 19th. We scheduled as a special meeting on July the 12th.
All right.
Okay.
So we know what we're going to be doing in our meetings. And I want to thank everybody for their hard work and especially Cindy and Phillip has had to work a lot extreme and Caleb and all of our staff.
Madam Chair, I do want to apologize to the Board for missing the budget here in last meeting. I was, had an ox in the ditch situation at work, but I do want to say that I fully and wholeheartedly support the budget and thank you all for your hard work and thank you Phillip, Cindy and Caleb for all your hard work on the budget. I'm proud to be a part of it. I apologize that I wasn't able to be here for the budget here, but I have, it has my full support.
All right.
Thanks, Board.
Thank you. If nothing else, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
All right, we have the motion in a second. All in favor, say "a" and let's go on. Aye.
Well, if I really want a second, then you can try to run on me. I'm so sorry. Sorry, I understand my second.
The Board, excuse, really quick, I got some names for the two board appointments. They all voted on?
Yes.
Are you going to test them out, or what?
I wish.
Edward Dean.
Yep.
Boy, being in town, this picture ain't...
Economic Development Committee.
You said I left money in some box, so I expect...
Good, that's all. And you got my cell number if you have a question.